Meeting to order, January ninth, 2019. We have a quorum. We have Tara, Sarah, Barbara, and myself. And we have Susan as secretary, town planner Max, who just left the room, but I think he'll be right back, and trusty Bill, our assistant. Thank you. Let's see. We can wait for Max, but I don't think there are any adjustments to the agenda for the moment. We can go back to that. Are there any -- I notice we have some citizens here. Are there any citizen comments that are not related to the American Unagi application? Okay.
I think Ted just pulled in.
Oh, perfect. Ted is arriving. I think Max went out the front door. Maybe Max can go.
How do you know?
His truck, I think.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah, he'll just come through that.
Yeah, he'll come through that door. Okay. Before we go to new business, we have meeting minutes to approve from the December 12th and the November 14th meetings. Are we all set to be able to vote on those? Have a chance to review those? Okay.
Do the planning board members have the version that you sent to everybody?
I believe that they --
I'm not sure what Max has given us.
I believe that Max copied it for everyone. Max, you gave us everybody a copy of the latest version of the December 12th meeting?
Do either of you have that all up?
Mm-hmm.
No, I take it back. We are -- we are fine. Oh, that's -- I'm sorry. No, I don't have anything down there.
Okay. So any comments or changes to the minutes? Because I'm okay. Susan incorporated the changes.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Both such minutes, or are you voting as?
Just November. I wasn't here in December, so.
Okay.
It was November.
Okay. So a motion to approve November, and it's seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. You could still move for the December 12th. But however, we need a motion only December 12th.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any comments on those as -- as written in the latest revision?
So I just had a question about how this -- so the stuff in the minutes isn't necessarily things that happen in the meeting? Is that right? So in other words, how did the date for the DEP meeting get included in the minutes? Is that just afterwards? Or is that how these things are done?
I didn't know what it was.
I didn't even notice that.
Number seven, next planning board meeting. The last sentence, a public meeting was held this week regarding application.
Oh, yes.
My version doesn't say that.
No. That's the version that Max has given to us tonight. I didn't catch that either.
I'm just wondering how these things get included. I didn't read that. And I guess you did it, if you don't remember.
I don't think Max gave me that.
The December meetings, minutes, I thought all had to do with actually pering in the meeting. But on here, it says regarding the next planning board meeting. It mentions the public meeting was held. So it's, you know. Was held.
We didn't leave that out.
And the town office this week regarding application for permit.
Yes, that, okay.
So it just seems a little.
That was in the draft as of -- this was still as if it was in the draft of 1213. That came from Susan. So it was in your original draft, Susan.
What was in the original draft? Next planning board meeting?
That was for the informational meeting.
End of part seven.
That was for the informational meeting.
I don't see a date of the DEP meeting.
Put in the paper for the -- Sarah?
Hey.
Your informational meeting for the DEP, that was on the 10th?
Yes.
Yeah, so that meeting was held before this, the December meeting.
Oh, and that was where?
Here, at the office?
So there was also one on the 28th? That's what I saw listed in the paper. It's a meeting about this for the 28th.
So that's still referring to?
No?
Yep.
It said a meeting will be held on or about December 28th.
Oh, no, that was the permit, the actual application, when the application was going to be filed.
And I thought, but I thought that was a public meeting announcement.
There was a public meeting announcement for the DEP informational session. And then we also did an intent to file for a stormwater, which was also filed recently. But that doesn't have a public meeting. It's just a date around when that was going to be filed.
Yeah.
Okay.
So when I remember this first part of this, so I -- this was as of that meeting.
It was, okay.
So it's not post. Because you're right, it would be, it's supposed to be the substance of the meeting and it's added afterwards. Okay.
So we shouldn't include that?
No, so, no, it's fine. It was information as of that meeting. Because I remember Max going over that it was on the agenda for the ninth, for the meeting of the ninth. This private and public meeting took place before, before our meeting. It was on December 10th.
No, I know that.
Yep.
So instead of saying this week, it should say December 10th?
You could.
It can.
It doesn't matter, I guess.
Sure.
If Barbara's unclear, it would be clear on her.
Well, I wasn't even at the meeting, so why am I even?
Right, yeah. That's fine.
You'd like me to change it to December 10th instead of this week?
Sure, why not?
Okay. I can make that change on the file copy if you all agree.
Anything else that we should change? Kind of a motion to accept as modified?
So moved.
Second.
Anything else? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay.
I'm abstaining.
Yes.
Two, three, four.
December 10th.
One abstaining. Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Okay. So next, new business. We have a site review for American Unagi. So would you like to start with a brief review? And then we can get into questions as we go forward?
Sure. So I just, should I stand up?
Yeah, please. Stand over there would be great.
I did have an official presentation, but I'll just keep it casual.
Oh, okay. I love slides, but it's okay. We don't really set up too.
I can turn any perfect ones around.
Okay.
But just to quickly introduce myself again. My name is Sarah Radamacher. I started American Unagi in 2014. And the idea behind the business is it's growing, taking Maine harvested glaciers and growing them out to market size using aquaculture. A little bit of background on myself is I come from the aquaculture industry. I've been growing fish in a lot of different species for 15 years. But I came back to Maine with the intention of starting an aquaculture business. And at the time, I didn't realize it was going to be eels. But I wanted it to be land-based aquaculture. And this form of aquaculture, you have the ability to control all of the growing parameters so you can put it in the best circumstances possible for the organism. But you also can control the inputs and outputs into your facility. So overall, you're able to control your impacts on the environment around you in a way that most other aquaculture paths in production you can't. So as I looked around at different species, I did a couple business plans, and nothing seemed to work well because you either had to build these massive facilities, or just it was too much of a risk. A lot of species haven't been grown this way. But I saw what was happening with our glacial fishery in Maine, which is really unique. We're one of only two states that are allowed to fish for the glaciers. But the entirety of that fishery is getting exported mostly to China, grown out on farms there, and then imported back into the U.S. And we're importing more and more eel back because we have a growing sushi industry. Now we're importing 5,000 metric tons. And when those eels come back, they're worth seven to 10 times the value of what they leave this state. So to me, it was an opportunity to do something that, with eels, that have been done before. So eels have been grown in these sorts of systems since the 1980s in Europe. But we can keep that value here in the U.S., but ultimately produce a higher quality, safer product for the U.S. consumers. So that was really what I saw as an opportunity here, and that a fish that had a connection to Maine. So I started working on a very small scale in 2014, actually in my basement in Thomaston. We were out a handful of eels. That looked good. I started looking for a space to do a pilot facility. And that's when I first came to Waldeboro, and I connected to Sam Chapman, looking at his old shad hat tree to see about doing a pilot facility there. In that, the means of, or kind of in that time period of talking to Sam, I found out a space at the incubator in the Darley Marine Center down in Walthall. And we did pilot grow out there. So I've grown eels beginning in 2015 at kind of small-scale commercial densities. So we grew product, we put it into the marketplace, and really demonstrated that this business could happen here in the U.S. The other thing that we spent time doing the last couple of years is actually working with engineers. So we found a really great group out of the Netherlands who have built eel systems all over the world. And that's who is building and designing our facility. And again, part of the reason of choosing this is we have, it's a group that has built eel systems before. It's not a new system. It means that, you know, our design, our facility, our numbers are based on actual, you know, eel numbers versus a theoretical, you know, big commercial facility. So after kind of looking at the business numbers, we put together this formal plan. I came back to Waldeboro, looked at Sam Chapman's property, and it ultimately wasn't going to work. But in that conversation, I got introduced to George and the environmental park, and learned about his vision for that property, and also about the old town well and that water source. And as we looked at that facility and that space, out of the places that I've looked in Maine, it's really ideal. And as I got to know the town, I also learned that it has one of the highest densities of alvee fishermen, too. So in terms of finding a place to locate a commercial eel aquaculture facility, I really found Waldeboro to be ideal. You know, it's a town that, it's got a great space with George's vision of the environmental park, but also it's got a connection already to the eel fishery in a way that most towns don't. So our site plan is for a 240 metric ton facility. This is about half a million eels produced annually. And let me pull up a picture real quick. I guess, let's do the outside, and then I'll show you the inside and what kind of an eel facility looks like on a regular basis. So this is George's property here on One Pi Road. The facility in the area that we're looking to build is six acres. And a 240 metric ton facility in terms of aquaculture, land-based facilities, is actually kind of modest. But the reason you're able to do this size of a facility is because the eels are very valuable, so you don't have to build these big giant plants. The building size is 2,700, or excuse me, 27,000 square feet. And I don't know if, Will, do you want to speak to kind of the aspects of the property? So we're working with Gartley and Dorsky on the civil engineering side of our site.
Sure. I've actually got a blow up here of the site plan. As Sarah said, we've got a 27,000 square foot building here. Main entrance is coming. I'm standing right in.
Do you want to switch spots with me? There we go.
So we've got the 27,000 square foot building here. It's going to be a pre-manufactured steel building. And we've got the entrance off of the loop that's already there, which is One Pi Road. And a main entrance coming in. There's a drive all the way around the building to give us access to different parts of the building, and some of the different utilities that are around the back of the building. All of, we've just submitted today a stormwater management permit application with the DEP. And all of the stormwater is being from the building, and the roof and the parking is being directed to an undergrain soil filter on that side of the property. There's a discharge there, and overflow, and then it leaves the property on that side. And we have a small septic system right here for the employees, for the people that are working in the building. It's for 400 gallons a day. Again, there's adequate space for the deliveries and the trucks and everything to move around the building. This building doesn't really fit anything that's in your ordinance regarding parking requirements. The space is mainly filled up with the process and storage and equipment. It's really not a lot of people. I think you've got maybe seven, eight people on a shift type of thing.
Yep.
So we provided 13 parking spaces, giving us a few extras for visitors or clients or guests. It seems more than adequate for what we're doing there. One of the big items on this project is definitely the well. And we did provide a lot of information on the yield of that well. The fact that that actually has been used previously for more water than what we need is a pretty unique situation, so that was a huge advantage to this location. The other is obviously the river. There is a discharge, and that's a lot of what she was talking about, the engineers that are working on the design of the building. We will have an outlet pipe. After the water has been treated, it's going to leave the building. It's going to come down One Pi Road. It's going to go across Route 32. We'll be doing directional boring across Route 32 so that we don't have to dig across it. And then we'll be going an outlet into the river. That permit application has been submitted to DEP also. And in all our discussions with them, everything seems to be going pretty smoothly. To get into the river itself will also be directionally boring. It'll have a lot less impact, and we won't have any erosion problems.
That means going like that?
Yeah, basically.
The tunnel, the channel?
When you go on the, under a road, you dig a pit on either side.
Yep.
And then just directionally bore under. We do it with utility lines all the time. Actually, the high school did it with their track. They had to put drainage in after that, and we did it underneath the track in order not to dig up the track. So it's done pretty commonly. And then into the river, we'll dig a pit, giving ourselves a barrier between the river and the pit. And then they'll just bore right in so that we can discharge at the bottom of the river.
Would you comment on the type of water that you're going to be discharging into the river?
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. So with our well water intake and our output, we're looking at 96, 95,000 gallons a day.
A day?
Yep, yep. So, and that water, before it leaves the facility, goes through a pretty serious secondary and tertiary treatment. So we're taking the solids out. We treat for removing phosphate, treat for nitrate and nitrogen, and then we'll do a final polishing step to clear the water up. And then we sterilize it with UV before it goes out.
That's beyond the usual.
Yeah, yeah.
So all that happens in the building?
Exactly, yeah. And I'll show you a picture. I don't know if there's any other pieces on that, but I'll show you a picture of kind of the inside of the building and walk you through kind of day-to-day processes.
Why would there be seven manholes then to, for clean out if it's going to be that clean when it's leaving the building? What are you expecting might happen?
Oh, you mean in the pipeline on the way to the river? The manholes are really just for change of direction.
Okay.
And so that we have access to it at different locations. So when we've got that much water going, you just don't want to have a long, long run without access to it from either side, just in case you ever needed to get to it.
So it's 90,000 in, 90,000 out per day?
Would you be capable of doing some of the testing yourself to make sure you have consistent quality?
Absolutely. That, you know, within our system, water quality is a huge part of the regular day-to-day operations.
Just looking for details?
Yeah. So we will have a lab within our building where that's, with our main eel system, we test it regularly, but we also are going to test any of our other systems, too. So we'll have water quality records around that.
The, the system that's doing the remediation, well, I don't know if that's the right term, but the treatment, the treatment of the water, is that also being designed by the Netherlands company?
Yep.
So they, so they're basically designing the entire manufacturing system, including the water treatment?
Yep.
So do you have a feel for what the, there, does, is our requirements of DEP requirements for the discharge, are those in the, do those match up with what they're used to designing for? How does our regulations match up with what they've designed to before?
Yeah, and that was one of my questions, too, as we looked at this. So I actually looked at a couple other waste treatment designers, but we ended up going with the Dutch because it is standard, you know, waste treatment processing that's, you know, that they use. And that we saw a benefit in keeping with the same engineers within the system.
Okay.
And regarding our conversations with DEP, we've been working with them kind of from the beginning with this. And as Will noted, that with all the preliminary talks, they're quite impressed with the discharge and don't see a problem with it.
So the nitrates, the phosphates, all that stuff gets collected and goes off-site somewhere?
Yeah, so phosphate, that process is, you use what's called flocculation, so you actually physically remove it. The nitrogen gets broken down by bacteria, so it's a natural process.
And it may become a fertilizer ingredient.
Oh, good.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, we actually, yeah, we've got some interest from users on the solids that are coming out.
Can I ask another question about your previous plan that you had up? The red dashed line around the perimeter looks like on the bottom and the two sides is a setback, but what is it on the front of the building? What does it signify?
Right here?
Yeah.
I think that's also a setback from.
From left, yeah.
From the property line or the lease line.
You mean that much of a setback?
That's what the.
It's 150 feet in industrial spaces.
That's what the town's ordinance is.
Really?
Yeah. It actually blew us away when we first noticed it.
But it's updated?
And it was prohibited for some other parcels that we looked at.
And it's okay to put septic and whatnot in the, within the setback?
Yeah, it's just a structure setback.
Just a structure setback?
It's a building setback, right.
So on 32?
Wow.
Wait, is this because it's the business park, it's 150 feet, or what?
Well, that's, first I've heard that number in the buildings that we've put up there, but.
It's in the ordinance now.
So good, we should follow up on that one, especially the land use, the land use.
You just need to hear it.
Yep.
So from Article 3, page 10, I'm just reading from the industrial dimensional requirements.
Oh, industrial, okay.
Yeah, because.
Yep.
The industrial park isn't its own district, it's just in the industrial zone. The road setback is 150 feet. The side rear setback is 30 feet.
Okay.
And then max lock coverage is 80 percent, max building height is 42 feet.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sure we'll have more questions. Sorry to interrupt, but.
That's a pretty, I mean, the, the building is pretty simple. We have propane tanks back here. We have oxygen here. There's a generator here, and an exposed dumpster at this location.
Wasn't there additional on the way to the septic tank? Is there an additional tank?
There is. So the tank that comes out of the building right here.
Yep.
And we have a septic tank here, and then that line comes across over to the underground system at that location.
There's another one somewhere.
The other tank that's right next to the dumpster is for a process that's happening at this end of the building. Sarah can definitely describe it better than I can. But that tank is going to collect the discharge from that process, and that'll actually be pumped. There'll be a vendor that will come, you know, like Interstate Septic or something, and come and actually take that right.
Okay. That's on C-1. So maybe, well, since we're on this, can you describe what that, what is that process that's separate?
Yeah, so we were with kind of that side of the building, that processing area for taking, which is our product is live eel, but we wanted to have. So in initial conversations, it was recommended for this kind of on the guards to play with the processing materials. About this, this further discussion, it sounds like with the volumes, that we might actually be able to just go right into septic. In talking to, I talked to current processors, some consultants, and also septic guys, and they said with the volume that we might not need the holding tank. But I kept it in hand.
Okay. So is that just, just gutting and cleaning process?
Yeah. My concern and kind of the thing that was on my radar was if they use cleaning supplies, that they can sometimes disrupt a septic system.
Oh.
So that's why.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. So, but, and again, in talking with some of the processors and consultants, the chemicals are not, they can go into a septic just fine.
So is that what this plan shows? Because you said there was a separate holding tank.
Right now, we're not, there's a, there's a tank, typical septic tank here.
Yep. Okay.
That's going to be connected to the bathrooms and the sinks. And then there's a separate tank at this location.
Okay.
If it's determined that that is okay to go into the system, then it could easily be connected.
Okay.
And taken over.
Okay.
The system could be upsized a little bit if it needed to be. But it's set up so that we can do it either way.
Okay.
We have Interstate come down to our, we have a tank like that for us, for our floor cleaning. It would be too rich for a septic system, so it's fairly routine with Interstate.
Thank you, George, for reminding me. So things like floor drains and stuff like that, what happens with that type of water? Dirty water?
So we have separate, so floor drains on this area will go into the septic, but the floor drains from the process area is just going to be, it's going to be the same sort of water from our system, so that'll go into trap and out.
And does the DEP have long-term responsibilities to come check the water at the outflow point on a regular basis? Or who takes responsibility for things being, you know, you leave, someone else manages the plant, and it's not quite up to snuff? How do we, how does the town know that the water's in good shape that's being discharged into the river?
So that becomes part of our permitting and the approval process is that is contingent upon, you know, meeting certain standards that were, that are in the application. And that's.
So do they test? Do they come and test?
So there's reporting requirements. So they are required to report.
Okay.
What their qualities are. And then the DEP has the right to come and inspect and check at any time, once they've issued that permit.
Yeah, like, for example, at the current facility that we're working with, so right now, we've got more eels up at the Center for Cooperative Aquaculture, and we have an annual meeting with DEP, and they go through all of those records that are on that site.
And that's required by the state?
With, yeah.
It's usually a condition of the permit that they issue.
Well, it's one of the reasons it would have been nice to have been able to meet with the DEP people, to ask these kind of questions, rather than, you know, just to see how they work generally, because they have no idea. And it's curious. Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, Sarah.
I have a big imagination, so I have a question. It's a what-if question. Supposing you're operating this facility, and something happens, and a whole bunch of things gets sued or whatever within the facility, how do you cope with that?
Um, that's, it really depends on the situation. So would it be helpful if I walk you through the inside of what the facility is like?
You can. I just, I just, I mean, hopefully that would never happen, but.
No, exactly.
If it did happen, it would be like, probably a big problem.
Yeah, so I, I mean, an emergency like that is something that you can make a plan for, but you anticipate it not happening because it's going to ultimately destroy your business. One thing that we do as far as our facility setup is, with these land-based systems, is maintenance and, you know, the health of your organisms is really key to a successful business. So having regular monitoring, you know, with the last four years of operations, we've years of operations, we've never had a serious disease problem or big loss like that that's caused it.
What do you use for food for your eels?
So, we use a standard aquaculture diet. In Europe, they've been growing these guys for a long time, so they actually have eel diet, eel-specific diets, but we're working with a US manufacturer that's able to produce a diet that's similar.
You don't have any difficulties with that, the quality of their product?
No, and it's something that the aquaculture feed industry, there's a lot of work being done with making feeds even better and more effective. So, that's something that we constantly kind of reevaluate to make sure that. It's also, one of our biggest costs with growing the eels is having good feed, and it affects their health and their nutrition and growth and all of that, so.
Is it fish byproducts?
With eel diets, it has predominantly protein that's marine-based, but we also have been working with diets that are algae-based, which is becoming a growing trend. You can get a lot of the same kind of protein components that are in fish from algae instead. And I don't know if that answers your emergency question, your wondering how we're dealing with.
No, it's not specific at all.
Well, if, if, can I rephrase it? Supposing a whole bunch of stuff, like antibiotics or whatever, had to go into the system to flush it out, not the usual nitrates, phosphates, and all the stuff on the, suppose it's additional medicines that have to go through, do, how do we know if the treatment system deals with that before it hits the river?
So, we actually, in our permit, I don't use antibiotics, and, but what I did with our DEP is I wanted to make sure worst-case scenarios were covered. So, they have a full list of typical fish antibiotics that are used, and what we would have to dose with if there was a foreseen, like crazy, emergency. So, they're actually aware of those things and are running, you know, that's part of our application process, they're going to be checking that stuff. But, I mean, again, I don't, with our farm, we're working with fish vets that are actually based here, so we've been able to operate so far, and our plan is kind of following the European model, that don't use antibiotics. So, yeah, or hormones or any of that.
But does the treatment system deal with antibiotics? Does it deal with the worst-case scenario, as is?
Yeah, so antibiotics, most of them are broken down by UV.
And you have a UV treatment as part of this?
Yeah.
Sarah, could you just give me a little more detail, the monitoring you do in terms of eels, water quality? You alluded to it, expand on that a little more.
Yeah, so kind of walking, yeah, walking you guys through kind of the operations on our eel farm. So, I actually have a photo, I can show you real quick.
This is better than yours.
Yeah, that works. So, the majority of that building, as you can kind of see on the outline here, is eel tanks. So, that is really most of our operation and day-to-day. So, the things that we have people working on is feeding eels and monitoring the water quality and doing system maintenance. So, the things that we monitor for the health of our eels is the nitrogen levels, ammonia, temperature. Oxygen is one of the biggest things, so those are within our eel system that we monitor. Let me see if I can pull this guy up for you.
If she's talking, think of this as an intensive care unit. Y'all know what that is in a hospital. It's exactly what's going on here. Food, chemistry, air concentration, watching people, sanitation, holding, exactly what's taking place. You can conceptualize that easier than a big woman.
Yeah, so if you can see in here, I'll just walk this around briefly. This is kind of the layout of the system. So, most of it is in the aquaculture system. This backside over here is the filtration equipment. Does anybody have an aquarium? So, it's, so the water's constantly recirculating, and that becomes, just like your aquarium, the biggest thing to monitoring the health of your fish is feeding and actually getting in there and seeing your organism. It's like any farmer, somebody who's good can walk through their crops and see, you know, are, you know, are things growing, are the leaves green? You know, the same thing with our eels, is we look at, you know, how fast they respond when we throw in feed. We look at, you know, weight, their fins, all of those sorts of things, really gauge, you know, I can actually, even the smell of the place, I can tell you if something's off. So, let me just show you really quick, so you guys can see too, this is what the facility looks like on the inside. So, a couple of things you'll notice, with our system, we actually have a couple separate systems. So, that's one, one thing that we do with our production, is our baby eels come into a separate area. So, when they come in, in the spring, we treat them kind of on their own, get them to a certain size. We do what's called weaning, where you teach them how to eat that eel feed. And once they get to a certain size, then they move into the production system. And we actually have duplicate systems, which is one of those kind of risk mitigators that we do.
Duplicate, meaning the small ones and the large ones, or there are two other multiple large-eel duplicates?
There's two systems, so we have two rows of tanks that actually have their own filtration units.
Okay.
So, that allows us to kind of have redundancies built in.
Yep, okay.
Some of the other things you'll notice, or that, like, we're referenced here, is oxygen is a big part of our system, so eels need oxygen to grow, but it also is an emergency system, so, for us. And then the backup generator too, is something that's really pertinent to, like Sam was saying, it's an intensive care unit, so you've got to make sure that every single part of the system has a redundancy built in the backups.
Many years ago, when one PI operation was operating, they dumped an immense amount of sodium hydroxide in the river. It was so bad, the eels climbed out of the river, out of the bank to get away from the sodium hydroxide.
Really?
They were breaking down the hide of the squash plant with this, with the sodium hydroxide.
Eels don't have that much sodium hydroxide.
No, they don't, no. I just thought you might enjoy the history.
Yeah, I always like a good eel story.
Not a bad squash story.
Are there any other particular questions, or?
Well, I've got a couple, but I, relative to the well, so the town still owns the well?
No.
Okay, so, who owns the well?
So, which one?
Oh, you do, okay. So, there's no, there's no, like, permit or ownership issue there? Okay. I did have a question on the, on the sodium hydroxide and hydrochloric acid. It mentioned that you were using containment pallets. Now, if I understand correctly, those are pallets with liquid containment built into the pallet? And the, the capacity of those, the containment part is an entire drum?
Yeah, it's just over what they have the capacity of holding.
Okay.
How many drums? I actually checked on that before I left, because I was curious about the same thing when I read that. But they, they're pallets that actually are built-in containment, so drums sitting in there, if they leak, there's enough capacity there to hold the entire drum.
Right, right. So, you've got, so, in the separate, and they're separated, the, so, the sodium hydroxide and the hydrochloric acid are sufficiently sep, like, by, like, separated how?
Well, they're in different locations and kind of...
Okay, all right, okay, yeah. Speaking of worst-case scenarios, worse than the fish dying would be multiple drums of those two mixing?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
The result of hydrogen, sodium hydroxide and acid, hydrochloric acid, is one.
Well, and, uh, you...
Eventually.
Eventually. But it's a, it's a high-heat producing process, if you blend those two together. And you might get chlorine gas, but I have to think about that one. Okay.
I just had one.
Yeah, go ahead.
We've spent a fair amount of time just talking about the DEP application, and it notes here that there were several. Am I reading that right? DOT Utility Accommodation, US Army Corps of Engineers. So, this is a multi-step process for you. Any approval on our end would obviously be just one sort of link in the chain. You have a long ways to go. Okay, so, so you have a lot of people overseeing your application process, to sum it up. Yes, absolutely. Many eyes, that's a good thing.
Well, there's DE, let me, I wanted to make sure I captured the pending ones, because I have DEP for the, for the outlet into the river and for the site, the site drainage.
The stormwater.
Yeah, the stormwater, that's the better, better way to put it. And what were the, and what are the others that were, are pending?
I see DEP Waste Discharge Stormwater, DEP NRPA.
Which is?
Permit by rule. And please correct me if any of these are relatively related.
Wetland.
Oh, that's cool.
Actually, the wetland is under the permitting protocol, so it is a permit related to the wetlands.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
The permit by rule is for the, it's also related to the discharge.
Oh, okay, so...
And the Army Corps gets a copy of those permits that are anything related to the river.
Okay.
So, they review those also.
Is this Dutch firm doing any other projects in Maine?
No, not right now.
But they have?
No, this will be their first US project. They've built several facilities in the Netherlands, in Lithuania, in Madagascar, and Singapore.
And do they come and build it? Do they have their own crew? Who builds this?
So, the way that they typically work when they build it in other countries, is that they've got their team of engineers, but they hire local people to do a lot of the work. The example that they gave us, with one of the farms they built in Lithuania, they hired, I think, three guys and on to help with the facility build-out. And the company actually ended up keeping two of the guys to help with facilities management, so.
Do they own some of these facilities, or do they just design-build, or do they own and manage as well as design-build?
They design-build, but one thing that I really liked about these guys is that they actually have operational experience too. So, the founder, who's Dutch, actually lived in Florida for quite a few years and ran a surgeon farm down there and built it. So, that's something that stood out to me.
Would it seem to say that the Europeans are decades ahead of us on land-based aquaculture?
They are, and they also have extremely strict regulations. So, that was another thing I liked.
How does the feed get delivered? Is it in a big truck? I mean, is it bagged, or?
Yeah, so the feed is bagged individually, typically under 50-pound bags, and then it'll come in once a month, and we've got a feed storage area in here, so we actually store enough feed for a month, and the rest is...
Could you explain in a little more detail the water treatment process, its four steps? Could you just give us a little more detail?
Yeah, so there's, there's a full diagram in the DEP permit, which is available. But the, the way water is treated with, are you asking within the aqua, within our eel system or before it leaves?
Well, before it leaves, in particular, but you can also do the other two.
It's, it's both similar processes, but with our discharge, we go through a couple of steps. The first one is we remove the solids, and you use what's called a belt filter. So, it's actually a physical removal. You then add, it goes through a phosphate removal process, so that is, uses a flocculation. So, you add, in our case, it's either going to be lime or ferric chloride, and that mixes in, flocculates the phosphate, and then you can physically pull that out. And then, that goes through another, basically, belt filter, second one. So, that removes physical phosphate. It then goes into what we call a bio-reactor, which is similar to what we use in our eel system, and that's also standard in waste treatment. So, it's actually a bunch of media that has beneficial bacteria that break down nitrogen. And then, our final step is polishing, so it runs through a very fine filter, like, almost like a sand filter, to clarify the water. And then the last step is UV, so it goes through an ultraviolet sterilization process before it's discharged.
So, in this, all that that's feeding that, that's basically just the output from the eels and any leftover food that's in there? Is that basically?
Basically, yeah. So, most, 95 percent of the water is recirculated continually. Where we remove the water, actually, I think I've got the diagram, I don't think it's that useful. But, so, when those eel tanks are cleared out, you pull out solids, and most of it's just feces, and that's where we lose water, is when those filters are cleaned, just like when you clean your fish tank, you got to take out the filter and clean it, and that's when you use some extra water. So, that's what feeds into that waste treatment process, secondary and tertiary.
So, and, so that's, what percentage of the total gallon capacity, so how many gallons in the total tank?
So...
When the tanks are all full?
Yeah, so, so 95,000 gallons is 5 percent of the water that we have.
So, 95,000 coming in per day, it's recirculating, but there's already a much larger amount there. 95's coming in, and that's about 5 percent, and about 5 percent is leaving per day. Okay. So, I had a question, Max, that maybe you can answer, I had emailed you. I was curious if, and I, if we have any other outflow pipes in the river, in this area, or any part of the river?
In terms of outflow pipes, not, nothing, nothing especially like this.
There's a water cooling, permitted water cooling discharge at the other seaweed factory that just puts out a small amount right downstream from you, actually. That's the only one I know of. Cannon factory used to, but that, long ago.
Yeah.
Because you had a, on, it's like, former utility easement, and I was just wondering if there might, is that what it was?
There's, yeah, there's an easement on the property that I own, this property, that easement is also applicable to Bob Morse's property, which is at the entrance to the road, and it goes over to where there used to be a little building, and there's pipes that Sam knows about, that they used to bring water to and from the river, which is long since defunct. In fact, they used to have chlorine tanks down there that we had to dispose of 30 years ago.
So, Sarah, your project, you're kind of, you're not planning on expanding, you're explaining, planning on being very efficient and running at this size. So, if you wanted to do another complex, you'd have to go to another site?
Yep.
Okay. So, the baby eels grow up here, and then how big are they?
When, when they come in?
No, when you ship, you're shipping them out?
Yep, so we ship them out when they're 150 to about 250 grams, so anywhere from about here to here.
And they're shipped to somewhere for a food source for people?
Yep, so right now, all of our customers, we ship direct to chefs.
And they're live, shipped live?
Yeah.
Don't get your imagination going.
Oh, I've, I've, I've eaten them and been to all the fish markets in Japan, and it's, I find it fascinating, so I'm not, I'm biased towards the little guys.
Are there?
I do.
Are there any restrictions on the food product, such as there are, like with, I think with farm-raised salmon, sometimes there are certain populations that shouldn't eat them?
As, as far as restrictions on diet, or?
Yeah, like, wasn't there a report that, recently, that pregnant women should not eat farm-raised salmon?
I'm, I'm not sure in that report. I will say that with farmed-raised eel, it's actually far better than wild-caught because of the contamination issues. So, wild-caught adult eels that are coming from the river have very high levels of mercury and PCBs, but our farm-raised don't have that.
Fascinating.
Yeah.
From our rivers? From Maine rivers?
Yeah. Yeah, they actually, I think there's a Kennebec River, like, conservation group that has some of the data from eels from that area, and it's, it's off the charts on levels.
So, they're accumulate, like, for mercury, they would be an accumulator of, yeah, concentrate?
Yeah, and they're, and the, and part of that reason is that they're, they're bottom-dwelling fish in freshwater, and they also live a long time in the wild.
Oh, how, how long is that?
Around, in Maine, some of those big female eels can live... Around, in Maine, um, some of those big female eels can live twenty, thirty years.
Wow.
Yeah.
How big are they then?
Uh, several feet, some of those big ones, yeah. I don't grow them that big.
No taste is good then.
Yeah.
So, relative to the, so, in terms of the exterior site, and all that, and the, and the, um, storm drainage and all that, Gartley and Dorsky, you're, you're gonna supervise the?
Right, so we've got, um, the site plan, and we've got discussions with the specifications that.
Okay. And the, the Dutch firm is designing the building as well as the interior, or the building is separate?
The building is separate, so we've got a local contractor.
Okay.
This, I don't think will even be seen from the rest of the park unless you're putting how many trees you've got down. It's in a fairly wooded area right now, and at the distance you are from my roof, I don't think anyone's gonna know you're there.
Yeah, and we're only taking out the trees in the areas where we're making great changes and putting the building in park. So, there's a pretty good buffer that's gonna remain all around.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Will it smell?
No. I don't like the smell of eel farm, I don't like to work there.
It will improve the smell of the neighborhood.
George, if she wanted to expand, could you find some more land?
The question, I think, would be, I'd find some more water, but I, we have plenty of land, yeah.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
This is an area of another forty acres back there.
That's, I figured you had lots of land for whatever needed.
So, and part of DEP's consideration is just the volume of water, not just the cleanliness, but the volume of the water going into the?
Yeah, when they look at, um, permitting, they look at volume, they look at where it's going and the flows in that river, and, and do a bunch of calculations to look at impact.
Okay.
And is the outflow pipe below historical low levels? I mean, will we see it?
No, no, you won't see it. It's actually discharged at the bottom.
At the bottom?
And there's enough head from where we're discharging that gravity, it'll just go right in.
How deep is the river at that point?
Um, I actually have a section.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it was.
It doesn't really sink.
Thirty yards downriver, you can walk across it in dry season.
Yeah.
Right.
Right by the end, so it's, uh.
Says standing sixteen, well, not sure I'm reading that right.
Yeah, there is a, there is a, um, there's a low point right there, which we intentionally went after, but I think, I think that from normal, normal high water, we're gonna be about five to six feet to the top of the pipe. And that pipe is a six-inch.
Six inch?
Yep.
Okay.
In, in gallons per minute, this is like sixty or something?
Yep.
And you can put sixty gallons of water through an inch and a half pipe if you want.
Yeah, the perspective I kind of equated to is it's kinda, it's like a couple of gardenhouses.
So, um, before, I gotta, see if there's any more questions, but I did wanna mention, you know, normally we would go through the checklists that we have, but you've done a good job of providing responses using the checklist as a format, and so, assuming that everybody on the board has gone through the background material, I don't, unless someone wants to, um, I've been through it, I don't need, see the need to go through every bullet point during this meeting. But is there, is there anything that you wanted, either of you wanted to particularly point out in the rest of the application? You know, there's.
There's a lot of information.
There's a lot of information here, yeah. No, but, but it was good, that was what we needed.
We were intent was to, you know, nail this and, and have anything that you might have for questions, be advised.
Sarah, you mentioned the DEP, uh, application is available. Where is it available?
So, um, you can actually, in the Augusta office, it's available at DEP, and I can give you Greg Wood's contact information. That would be helpful. He's also.
Max doesn't have a copy, or?
I do have a.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe with the discharge, I did provide about, I think, five pages of that when she was talking about the filtration system. You all should have had that at the start of this meeting.
Okay.
And improved that, uh, sort of picture diagram.
Did you just?
Oh, yes, yeah, this one.
At the beginning of the meeting, it's underneath the.
This one.
Yeah, all that, okay.
Yep.
So, is this the only?
Timeframes for construction and also anticipation of getting all the permits, and it would be?
Yeah, yep, um, so as far as our timeline goes, um, we're expecting to, um, break ground this spring, and then, uh, the building would be up and going by the end of the year. Right now, we have our, uh, eel production, we've got about sixty thousand eels growing up at this other facility. We'll be bringing new babies in the spring, um, and once this facility is ready to go, we'll be able to move those eels, um, down and get that, so we won't have to wait till the following spring to stock it. So we'll have some eels that are partially grown that'll be going in there, and, um, then the following spring in 2020, we'll do a full glass of baby eels.
Also, on the expectation for the permits, uh, will?
Yeah, the stormwater permit, we expect to get in about two months. I think we expect to get the discharge permit before that.
Yep.
When would you anticipate your first commercial product sold here in Walterboro?
Uh, well, we actually, we're selling product now, so, um, I can certainly bring some down for you. We're doing only live product at the moment, so you've gotta be comfortable handling a, a live.
Find your own chef.
But, they're great.
So will you be buying elbers from the local Walterboro people that are?
Yep, yeah, so currently, we just, we purchase right from fishermen.
So, before I open up to citizen comments or any other questions or comments from the board, yeah, go ahead.
So, um, is this the only DEP, uh, report that there is?
I think there's more.
No, there's more to it, but I knew the discharge was gonna be the big question possibly talked about, so that's the part I wanted to sort of cut out and quickly send to everyone.
Oh, okay, but you have more?
I do have more.
Oh, okay. Do you have all of them? I mean.
I do have the full application that was submitted for the discharge. And we just got the stormwater one just now.
Okay, is that all the DEP reports that will be part of this application, or are there more reports?
No, those are, those are separate documents that go to DEP, they're not part of the.
They wouldn't be part of our, because we're not gonna approve them, we're not, we're not in a position to approve those applications anyway, those.
The discharge aspect, we're just approving.
Okay. But this doesn't go forward until all that's in hand?
Yeah, it would be, like, in cases like this, the approval, our approval, would be contingent upon, again, you have to remember, a local approval is always at the, the bottom, or the first, and the rest goes on top.
That, that said, those are public documents, and if you wanted to see them, and we wanted to go over them, you're certainly welcome to do so.
It's similar to the Northeast Transport, uh, Application, it was just approved two months ago for their parking. They had to submit something to DEP for.
Stormwater.
For stormwater, uh, there was just a lot of repetition between the two that I didn't think anyone needed to see it, whereas with this application, the discharge was a big difference between the two, so that was the part I decided to get out for everyone.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to open up, are there any comments from any of the attendees?
Everybody looks at me, right?
Could you, could you, could you, could you stand up?
Maybe I'll just wanna go for her.
But, but could you please stand up and identify yourself? But you, but you do have to, you do have to stand up and say who you are, though.
First of all, I'd like to say it's nice to see you, Barbara. Have you seen you a lot, I've not seen your face?
Yeah.
Good to meet you, girl.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Glenn Melvin, I am vice chair of the Walgreens Shellfish Committee. I am a representative on the State Advisory Shellfish Advisory Council for shellfish harvesting in the state of Maine. I've been an elder fisherman since the late seventies, so I've done this a day or two. The first time I heard about this project was in Norfolk, Virginia. I was in Norfolk representing the state of Maine to East Coast Fisheries. We were trying to increase quota for the state of Maine, so I met some really interesting people down there, and I did hear about Sarah's project down there, and just bits and pieces of what it was and roughly how it was gonna start, the whole nine yards. The question isn't how, uh, if we're gonna do this, is how we're gonna do it. This is, this project is huge, it's being watched statewide, if not obviously national-wide, if I heard about it, Norfolk, Virginia. A lot of people are watching it, a lot of buyers are watching it, this is a stepping stone. Walterboro is lucky enough to have her come here and do it. We, we should thank our lucky stars that this is another industry that has come to Walterboro, and another business that's gonna put us on the map. God knows, we're a fishing town, that's what we've always been, and this is just another great step forward. Uh, I have questions about the project, which I've already asked Sarah, and I look at it differently than you guys do. Her justification is to DEP a lot of the times. The river's justification is to DMR. They don't use the same guidelines and the same, uh, testing methods and the whole nine yards. Uh, they tend to test stuff that the DMR doesn't so much care about, and the DMR tends to test, uh, test stuff that the DEP doesn't so much care about. Being a major part of the mid-omic project, I know what we're hunting for. I'm gonna try to bend Sarah a little bit into a different style of testing, or something that would definitely look out for our shellfish industry. God knows, we're number one in the state, uh, you all heard my speeches before, and the whole nine yards, I'll try to spare that here. But this is a fantastic project, the Shellfish Committee completely supports Sarah. This is a good idea, this, we've gone through everything that could possibly go wrong, as you guys did, anything that could hurt us. There is nobody probably in the town that's more worried about the shellfish industry or what, or something that could hurt it than I am. I completely support her from an elder point of view. She'll be buying product locally. I spoke with the DMR last week, and I'm getting the data pack that you asked me to get. Uh, they said there'd be a few more days. They're giddy about this project. They are already in the process of lining up swipe cards, because when you buy these, you're gonna have to use your own swipe cards for aquaculture, as we do for open area. So the DMR knows all about it, I spoke to probably five people, and everyone knew about the project and was excited to watch it happen, and congratulated us on having it come here. So I think we gotta step back for a second and realize how lucky we are, as well as having her come here and the whole nine yards, so. I appreciate everything she's done, if anybody's got any questions as far as shellfish or where we're going. We hunt for fecal coliform, that's something I'm gonna try to bend Sarah into looking at more than E. coli. Totally different test, totally different way of looking at life, but that's the way that we've been forced to look at it. We have a test station at the bridge by Hanaford, so we will be monitoring the water. We get tested six to twelve times a year at that site by the DMR. So if anything ever goes wrong, I'm probably gonna be the first one to scream at Sarah. But it, it, it would pick it up at that level up there before it ever got anywhere else, so. She had my complete, Sarah?
No, go, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay, I was ending, I'm doing the wind down there.
Well, no, I did wanna, I, you know, I just wanna, just, having gone through a process recently on my, one of my wells on my property, that the UV, I did a little, the UV system that she's got. Cause the main concern for the shellfish, obviously, is the E. coli that you're talking about, and the UV systems are extremely effective.
They are effective, they can be overwhelmed, though, from the, everything that I've read, they can be overwhelmed and not able to kill at all.
And it needs to be clear, which is why you have the filtration system first, so.
We've gotta watch the process, and no one would be watching it any harder than Walterboro Shellfish. But that doesn't mean it's a bad project, that does not mean we are against this project, as a matter of fact, it's just the opposite. We are completely behind these people, we think that they know what they're doing. As I said, I heard about it in Norfolk, Virginia, and sat and spoke with somebody about Sarah's name and her project. I, I just did not quite expect to hear about a Thomaston or, or Walterboro MidCoast-based project while I'm speaking with, uh, people from the East Coast Fisheries. I, I just, it kind of stepped me back for a second, so I was quite surprised. So, I, I was interested in seeing, I never did follow up when I got back here, but I probably should have, evidently it came and got me. But anyway, it's, it's a neat idea, it's a neat process, as I said, if this goes as everybody is watching it go, this is gonna take off in a lot of places. And they're, they're buying their elbers from Walterboro, from Walterboro fishermen. See, this goes over and above your quota, this goes over and above your state-issued quota, so I could sell eels to her that I normally couldn't sell, period.
Wow.
How come? Why? How come?
Because it's under aquaculture. There's a difference between open-area elbers, which I have an open-area swipe card, and then I would have an aquaculture swipe card. So, she's allotted, I believe, there's two-hundred pounds, something like that, she's allowed a certain number from the DMR, which is okay through East Coast Fisheries first. They had to get permission from East Coast Fishers, that's how I learned about it down there, as I was part of the process. So, we got with the, the aquaculture to come back to Maine and let them okay the expansion. And then we brought it to Walterboro, man, this is cool as hell.
Yeah, it is.
Very neat stuff.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening to me, guys.
It's good to hear from the Shellfish Committee on this.
North of this spot in the river, are, do the elbers go up that high?
Yeah, they'll go all the way to the lake.
They do, okay.
Yeah, they'll go all the way up to the lake. I've, I've been to all the seminars and how they grow and the whole nine yards. But what I was told, the theories, I, and you hear different ones, and every scientist has all the answers. Uh, it goes up there, uh, uh, eel goes to a lake, it lives roughly twelve years is what I was told, then it returns to the ocean, then hits the Seragoosa Sea, and that's the only place I know, I don't know what the breeding ground.
That's a crazy story.
Drinks down there, I don't know what's going on, but they all go to the Seragoosa Sea, they reproduce, they die instantly, and.
They meet up with some mock butterflies.
In the gel.
I know, it's amazing.
And we catch them.
Make them rum. Okay, thank you.
All right, good.
Thanks.
George?
Uh, just from the standpoint of the business part, this is a very logical expansion of a, of a pattern we've been following. It's probably a thirty percent increase in the, uh, building area square footage. It's a good fit, it's completely consistent with the other things we're doing there in terms of repurposing, that's, you can see my eyes light up when we talk about fish manure. But the, we haven't figured out how we're gonna do it, but I'm certain that there's fertilizer potential here. We, we buy ferris sulfate by the truckload, and you're gonna be buying something just like it for the phosphate. We buy ferris, we buy phosphorus too, so it's, anyway, it's, I'm highly supportive of it, even if I wasn't the landlord.
It is exciting.
No, and I, I honestly, I wouldn't have gotten to this point without, um, the support that I've had throughout the state and community and fishermen, and it's, uh, it's big.
Land-based aquaculture is kind of the new broilers, I think.
Anything else? Any other questions, comments?
I would like to say one final thing, we talked about aquaculture there, right there. Land-based aquaculture is much more popular than sea-based aquaculture. We do not encourage in Walterboro, and it had, runs into a lot of blocks of aquaculture in the ocean. We struggle with somebody owning a chunk of the ocean and the whole nine yards. Land-based, we completely support. So that's just from a fisherman's point of view, where I deal with the Shellfish Advisory Council, I deal with a lot of people and a lot of different views, and sea aquaculture is not as favored as land-based.
So, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the American Unagi application pending the DEP approvals.
Move that nomination.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
I was an aye. I was too slow.
Okay.
No, I'm not opposed, I was a slow aye.
Motion carried. You are approved.
Go, girl!
Thank you.
Thanks to everyone and, uh, the community for coming out on what turned out to be a pretty terrible drive. So, please, be safe on the way back, and we have more business to conduct. So, for those of you who are, who are continuing your conversations. Just, for those of you who wanna continue your conversations, if you could take it outside, because we have more business to discuss as a planning board.
While that's all happening, I have the, uh, just a town copy to sign.
Okay. Okay.
I'll pass it on to Mary Unagi.
Do we write in upon approval? It doesn't matter?
Thank you.
What do you mean?
Upon getting all the DEP.
Oh, the pending?
I, what else?
They're wondering if they still sign.
Pending DEP.
Oh, yeah.
My boyfriend has a smoking business.
It's contingent of it.
Yeah.
Our approval is always contingent.
So I'll have him.
But they don't have to write down upon approval.
Is he in the little shed-on wheel?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a secret.
I'm ashamed to say I have not. I drive by all the time, and we're like, that place is so good. It smells so good. And then it's like, we've got to go to the.
That's why I signed under chairman, because that's the only reason why I need to be chairman, so they know who I am, otherwise that's probably Maine next to.
Jerk chicken? I love jerk chicken. Yeah. We went to Jamaica and the Chinese.
Okay. All right.
Ooh, boats. Those are good.
Yeah.
And it's on the left. Yeah, that was.
Your boyfriend, you bought an apple?
Mostly actually oak, and he really got, he did sugar beet, and it is, it smells sweet, and it puts that into the meat. It's really nice.
Sarah. Sarah, we'll have to talk about Uganda sometime.
Where, did you live there?
We, my husband, we worked on the aquarium in Boston's exhibition they had a number of years ago on the Lake Victoria and the Cichlids.
Oh, really?
The whole fishery system.
Wow.
So we stayed at the fisheries and, you know, traveled around and collected, we did all the collections for the exhibit.
Oh, wow. Yeah, no, I lived just outside of Kampala for a while and then worked with local fish farmers, and we were, I mean, at that point, it was around the Nile fishery, it just come and gone. Yeah, so I was working with locals.
What year were you there?
2008, yeah.
I think when it was for me, before that.
But I would love to talk to you more about it.
Yeah, sometime.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for good questions and always contact me if you have any more that pop up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, old business. Our friends, the Shoreland Ordinances, Article 7 and 10.
Could I recommend that we delay additional business so people can leave earlier?
Oh, I think that's a terrible idea.
Okay. Well, earlier might not necessarily be better than later, but depending on what's happening outside.
You two have the thing out there. What does it look like?
It's still doing stuff.
Is it still really lightly?
Well.
It's a question of the plows catching up. Well, let's turn this back on and.
I can check the front to see if.
Well, so Max, you have a long way to go, don't you?
Yeah, I think he has a longer way.
He's Canadian.
Well, 32 and the side roads, the side roads that are.
I have to go to friendship.
Oh, boy.
Goes to Denver, Scott. I'll check the front to see what it looks like.
Okay. When in doubt, look out the window. It's really a question of the plows catching up with what's, what came down. That's why coming in was so bad.
Yeah.
Well, depends on where you live.
Yeah, absolutely.
And what's the, what's the time? Are you going to find that out?
Yeah, I'm going to find that out. I have to, I decided, I was running out of power, so rather than just airplane mode, I shut it off for the power meeting. And I need Max to ask him about, because the real, we'll have a question of timing relative to the Shoreland Ordinance again.
Oh, because we have that April deadline?
Right. So, and we will have a new member, because last night Jim Russo was approved.
Yay!
So we have a, we have an additional person. So I'm happy to stop and deal with the Shoreland if we can find a time to meet about it that I can be here, that I'm around, because I've got some travel.
So you're not going to be here at next month's meeting?
I'm, I'm coming back from, from radio silence up north where there is no cell phone coverage, and I'm coming back on the 13th. So my plan is to be here in time to meet. But if we, so if we deal with it at that meeting, is that enough time?
February, so we would have to do, it depends if.
If they could wrap it up February, then schedule a public meeting.
It could be done then.
It could be done, yeah.
Okay, so.
Is there only hitch, the manure thing?
It is.
Yes.
Okay.
But we also have to plan on not having a snow day.
Yes.
Well, if we have a snow day, we'll have to have a second meeting.
Yeah, we'll have to have a special meeting.
Okay, but February is a short month, so that just doesn't give us a lot of time.
Why don't we kind of like, it's scheduled for the 13th. Let's see if we can square a room potentially for the week after in case.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that way, everybody knows beforehand.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's good.
So I guess the question is, would everyone be available Wednesday after?
I do talk about, I know this early.
I am.
Twenty, yeah. And you're available, Scott, you're back.
Yes.
Because the town office usually doesn't have any meetings on the first Wednesday.
Okay. So I did want to give a quick update, though, of something that I took on relative to this. As, I think I made it, I think I've made it kind of clear before, but I made it clear, I think, at the last meeting, which we didn't have, I know Barbara, you weren't here for that part of the discussion, that I'm uncomfortable with, as a board, arbitrarily changing the setback. Because the, you know, the agriculture department does all, is responsible for the testing, and they've said it's conservative, and they asked us not to change it. I did do one thing, however, because we did, and Max talked to a couple other folks, nutrient managed director, and, you know, we didn't hear anything different. But it occurred to me that, that that's the agricultural end of it, and if we really want to make, you know, I want everybody to be comfortable. So I just did a little trolling of the, of the marine resources portion of the state government, and I identified three people that looked like likely targets, and I simply emailed them. Well, Carl Wilson is the Director of Marine Science, and I copied Chris Sfera, who's the Shellfish Growing Areas and Water Quality Monitoring Person, and Bryant Lewis, who is the Western Maine Growing Area Program Supervisor. And I sent him an email, and I gave him the background and asked him what they thought. And Carl responded and said Bryant, that, you know, the Bryant is probably the right guy to respond. He has yet to respond. But I'm hoping to, to either have a phone call with him or get an email from him about what they think of this. And so I'll have that, I should have that. I'll make sure I have some kind of communication with him by the next meeting.
Because I didn't hear from the two people.
I have those names, Carl Wilson, Chris Sfera, and.
Bryant Lewis.
Brian.
Bryant.
B-R-Y.
Bryant.
A-N-T.
Yep. He's the Western, is the, the growing area, shellfish, the growing, well, it's not just shellfish, it's all fish, the Growing Area Program Supervisors. There's Western Maine and Eastern Maine, and we're in west, we're down, we're, we're not down east, we're up west, or whatever, and so.
I would be very nervous breaking from a long precedent as how this has worked out. I think we need desperately to stay with what's protected by the legal legality of the situation, and I would not deviate from it.
Right.
I would like to point, are you, did you through with that, Scott?
Yes.
In our vario ordinance, Article 5, Specific Performance Standards, Section C, Agriculture Related Businesses. C, manure storage, and I will be to you. No manure shall be stored within 300 feet of the normal high-water line of any water body, water course, freshwater, or coastal wetland, or wells used to supply water for human conception, or within 150 feet of the nearest dwelling other than the applicant's, unless stored in a weatherproof structure designed to agricultural standards. So we have that little piece of information in our ordinance now. And again, we're, one of the things that we have going on is, you know, this whole manure thing, whether it's a, you know, at 50 animals livestock, you have to have a state-approved concrete slab and covered facility. And then there's zero, you know, 1 to 49 animals that fall through the cracks right now. So even. So anyway, we already have some dimensions that are different than the 100-foot in our ordinance. And I, we can talk about this more on the 15th, but I, it's just kind of interesting. I don't know if some of you are familiar with the Romaine scare this summer?
Oh, yes.
Arizona and California. There's a report on it here. A number of interesting things about the report. Both what ended up happening, of course, they had to find out what, where the problem was arrived from, blah, blah, blah. No one knew where it started. That uncertainty was a problem. Everyone agrees more research must be done, blah, blah, blah. But anyway, Arizona and California, even at, even with the, the previous food safety rules required a 400-foot setback between, say, a cattle holding area and a water source. They, the new recommendations, they didn't increase it by a truck length or by, or 25% or 50%. They tripled it to 1,200 feet, despite the fact that they didn't have specific research to show that these cattle areas were, the runoff after storm events were contaminating water areas. In other words, they use common sense.
Or maybe. Or they were completely arbitrary, and so.
Different environment.
Yeah, yeah.
Some studies have been done on how much buffer is needed, but those studies were limited, the new rules of 1,200 feet.
Right. Keep in mind that that is, that is also what they're, you know, water supply, that they're watering the, that's, I'm assuming, am I reading that correctly?
That's right.
That they're watering the produce.
That's right.
So then the people are directly consuming the water that they watered the produce with. That's not like going into a river and getting filtered and.
Filtered by what?
Well.
We have E. coli.
By the space.
We have E. coli results all the way up and down the river.
I understand.
And we have that going into our clams and whatnot. So it's still food.
Yeah.
It's still runoff into our food system.
If I can just jump in here.
Yeah.
So I didn't know Scott was going to be searching marine persons at the state level. I am speaking, I am in the process of getting a data test from the Madomic project. Actually, I wish Glenn stuck, stayed for a few minutes, just so he could explain to Madomic.
He might still be in law.
No, he's not. I, I, I mean, I can see him in our, when I was walking in and out. But anyways, which is, way around. I'm speaking with, there's a professor at the University of New Hampshire who takes our samples, and he tests the wat, the bacteria testing. I've spoken with Damian Brady, who is with UMO, I believe it's, yeah, I believe UMO, for the marine studies program they have.
UMO is?
University of Maine in Orno.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
For University of Maine, just. And in all these scenarios, they have said there's been no indication of cow or farm relate, or livestock-related bacteria in the water they've tested.
In the river.
In the river.
In the Madomic River.
In the Madomic River. There is certainly a high level of nitrogen, I believe, very close to the very top of the river where the downtown area is, probably the station Glenn was talking about earlier. But they said that could be numerous things that couldn't, that may be farm-related, that may also be septic-related, that could just be, it could be a wide range of things that would require more studying. But I'm getting the bacteria tests just to have for everyone here. And then Barbara, on the manure storage, you pointed out earlier in the performance, that's relating to water that's consumed by people, whereas the one we're talking about is just, just water in general, so not water people are consuming. For C, no manure shall be stored within 300 feet of the normal high-water line.
Why do you, why do you say that? It has to do with consumption?
As in people, as in drinking water.
But it's talking about coastal wetlands. That's brackish water.
Or wells to supply water for human consum, I will look at that more, but I think that's just meant for.
Or wells.
Because it mentions freshwater as well.
Yeah.
So that water is more like, is likely to be talking about people's consumption of water instead of just water in general.
It says or wells. I don't read it that way.
Yeah, it's not inclusive.
It's, it's all kinds of well, water. But anyway, we can.
But I'm getting that testing stuff.
Great. That'd be very, that's very helpful.
That'll likely be a discussion for next month.
Can I just, can I just ask, though, the, so they haven't found to date, and the point about having laws moving forward is that there's an increase of small farms coming in, in what, it's for the new land, new, new uses of the land, the new farms coming in that we're concerned about, not, it's nice to have a baseline, but, you know, when this guy says that we're not, he's not seeing any present contamination from cows and that kind of thing in the river.
Yes.
That doesn't really mean anything to me right now. We're talking about the future use of land along the river.
Well, similar to what's your, the person you asked to speak with from.
Dave Roke?
Yes, from Farmer's Agriculture.
No, that wasn't David Roke.
He's a soil scientist.
Should be in the notes.
Yeah.
He mentioned that if you want to make sure that these, if we do decide to go beyond the 100 feet, that it is still commending to farmers who are still present right now. We don't want to.
Well, ordinance change wouldn't change that, right?
Yep.